Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the committee. What I'm here for is number 14A, which is my comment. There you go. Is it better?
Much better, thank you.
Okay. So what I'm here for tonight is 14A, report on the town grounds with contaminants in list of chemicals pesticides used. Is this better? So, I'm here for 14A, report of the town grounds with contaminants in list of chemicals pesticides used. I want to express my gratitude to Mr. Solley for putting this on the agenda in the support of the town council to reassure the community that our town is safe by being open on testing of our grounds. I put this similar agenda item on the school committee. Unfortunately, it was unilaterally altered by the chairwoman, but I can assure you that we will all get to the information out to the public, residents, students, children and grandchildren about all our facilities for both schools, grounds, other areas. I want to also say that I did raise it to the superintendent, and I want to commend him that he immediately contacted the state to obtain information on how we would proceed on something like this, to make sure that we're reporting on properly. I appreciate all who are concerned about our town. Thank you very much for taking this up.
Ms. Claire O'Hara?
My name, I don't know. My name is Claire O'Hara, 16 Summit Avenue in Ossmouthville. I'm concerned about the availability of the zoning people when you call. Earlier this month, I called three or four times to try to, I had questions on zoning, to set up something in my lawn, okay? No one, the lady there, I did not give them her name, said she wasn't sure, and when someone came in, they would get back to her. Well, they never did get back to her. And then I was informed that we only have a part-time zoning person that goes around to check to see if people are getting permits, et cetera, or maybe noticing that there's pools on wetlands, snow fences, and a foot away from buildings that been there like three years, and they're still put away from the building, five feet away from wetlands, and these problems haven't been addressed. You know, maybe it's just me, and part-time people, let's see if we can get someone who 's full-time. I think there's a necessity. You know, we can't wait until something happens because codes haven't been followed and permits haven't been pulled, and not only have, if they are pulled, they have to go back and check on things. And maybe my neighbor, they have a friend who electrocled, this is great, but if the household's on fire, I'm next door, it's not that great. So I'm concerned, I think it's a safety problem, and I don't know if you, in the budget, if they plan it full-time, but if they haven't, I think you better put it down.
We do, we have a recent resignation.
I agree with you.
We have a recent resignation from the office. We do have a position, a full-time building official position, that the waiter killed.
How recent? Because if it wasn't recent, recent, the man wasn't around much.
Maybe a month ago.
But, yeah.
Within the last month.
It may have been on his way out. But even when I've stopped in, I mean, it wasn't the place I knew. And I think there's been a great change within the last two years. And I think it's detrimental to this town that zoning is not even, there's even an in-ground pool in someone's backyard, so they have a fence on the side, but there's access through the woods, so the kids play in those woods all the time. So again, I think it's really important. So when you all get together to address some of the needs of this town, throw that one in, please.
Ms. O'Hara, the appointment of a building inspector, full-time position, lies with the town administration. She's not here to hear your concerns, but what this council did, this current sitting council, increased a part-time zoning inspector position. Mr. Johnson is that individual, he's the gentleman behind the camera, and he's working Thursday nights, and I understand on weekends, get caught up on some of these zones. So if you may want to send him an email, copy the town administrator, I think you will get results. I wish you were here this evening to answer, but she's not. So the town is actively seeking a full-time building inspector, zoning official, serves dual purposes, probably, well, Mr. Johnson, to take care of any questions about zoning violence.
And if the zoning board stop asking anything else until they stop enforcing what we have on the books all the time, why have all these laws when they're not being enforced? Can they not be enforced?
Many, but not.
Thank you.
Ms. O'Hara, else who speaks, I'm going to ask her. Dan, Dan Halloran?
Dan Halloran, Douglas Michael, I read in the inside of your call on Saturday, a letter from Sharon Angeliski, I think that's the popular pronunciation, and it says, "Coming soon near you, Walton Turbines." This morning, I went to the town hall, she's the, one of the things, some of the things she said in the letter, and it's known to certain officials of the town that wind turbines, or additional wind turbines are going to be coming. I went to the planner's office this morning at 9:00, he's on vacation, so that gave me the answers. I emailed the people, this Sharon, and she's the president of court, a conservative rural town, and she sent me an email back and said she's on vacation and other people would contact her. And I asked her several questions. I asked, she talks in the letter, of number one, she talks about a requirement that wind turbines cannot be more than half a mile. Technical. Wind turbines can't be more than a half a mile from a water source. So I spoke to Mr. Solley this evening as he was coming home, and I'm kind of at a loss, you're going to draft an ordinance, but he seemed to think, and Mr. Solley, please correct me if I'm wrong, the assumption, that the council doesn't seem to have any information on whether additional turbines are going to be placed in the town. That's number one. The second issue is, I asked her if this company, and I believe it's WBB, if they in fact need more than one turbine to make the project go financially. There was, she, as I said, they didn't answer me, and Mr. Solley didn't know. So I'm going to throw something back, especially to you as the issue. You remember the aquifer overlay zone? You remember that years ago, when you went down to State House, and it covers the Slade Road Press Square? Right. You're going to draft ordinance tonight, and I said to Mr. Solley, and this was my quote on the phone, I said, "This is like making the bed in the dark." I spoke to Mr. Solley tonight, and I asked him, I said, "You've got to include that aquifer overlay zone in this ordinance." If there is in fact going to be, now, I don't know if the people from WBB are here, and if they're going to tell us yes or no, but I think you can't turn around and create a zone if it has to be half a mile from a water source without including the aquifer. And the reason I say that is, one of the highest points in the town is the L R N R landfill site. Right? Yes, yes. And if that's where you're going to put a tower, if there's going to be additional towers going up there, that if it can't be half a mile from a water source, then it can't be there. I think that a lot more information has to be obtained by the council before we draft this, but I please, I'm asking you to consider the aquifer source legislation when you draft regulations, and I further say to you, if in fact, if we went to the hydrological office in Providence, I remember I worked with Mr. Martin Tohneal, and I don't know what ponds, et cetera, are near, we have this old great road, but if there's a pond there and that is a water source, does that half-mile radius kick in? Those are all questions that I was going to ask the planner, and he's on vacation. I know you're starting to try and draft an ordinance tonight, but I would ask you to consider those things when you're drafting it, and, you know, I think if in fact this company is planning on going town-wide, are they planning on coming, you know, upwards on Hill Road, I ain't telling the town, I think the rest of the town should know, and we can get the ordinance drafted, or you can get the ordinance drafted, correct? Thank you.
Hi, Dan. There's a lot going on here. This evening, we're going to have the ADHOC committee address the residents regarding all the work that the ADHOC has done on this ordinance. They're going to ask the town council for direction to proceed with a very cumbersome ordinance, and all of the requirements of monitoring it, or to ask council to just say no street across the board, all wind turbines in the town of Ossmouthville. So that's going to be discussed tonight. That'll be where me and the planning board this evening, and the state that the residents have organized court, keep our unique rural town, conserve our unique rural town, they also have the same type of ordinance request this evening as well. So if you get a chance to read this, it's a draft, every page on this ordinance has draft written across it. It's a work in progress. I would say it's probably a benchmark for any community, whether this town adopts this ordinance or uses it, this is something that should be shared with every community in the state of Rhode Island, that's how detailed the ADHOC committee went into this. We have received a letter of concern from the city of Woodstock because it is in a water, the proposed wind tower is in a watershed area that serves Woodstock. So these issues are being considered as we speak.
All right, so therefore, therefore, what you're saying, Mr. Zelensky, is the watershed area, in the letter from Woodstock, places that within a half-mile radius, is that what you're saying?
It does, it's a very close proximity to a watch, it's in the watershed. It's also, there's a number of things, Dan, that's common knowledge, it's manufacturing in a residential area. When you create energy, it's manufacturing, that's how it's considered. It's also an historic road, and the current zoning ordinance prohibits structures over 35 feet in height in this town. So the moratorium that is in place currently is to prohibit any other applications from coming in. That's why the ADHOC committee has met multiple weeks to address this ordinance so it will be in place. So when we come out, if the town, the draft, adapts this ordinance, or what the court people have presented, or what the ADHOC committee has also presented, at that point, the moratorium will come off. There may be, there are standards for development in here, and there are standards to protect historic areas, watersheds, a number of things, it's very detailed, Dan.
I spoke to Michael Darling this morning.
Yep.
You know Michael?
I do.
All right. Michael Darling, it's on the Industrial Development Commission, and I met him this morning, and we talked for a while, and he talked to me about the problem, the further you get from the coast, the lower the wind speed is. There was a study, apparently, that the town has, and I'm sure I know all the councils aware of that, that in fact, you might only get up to nine miles an hour of wind for no more than five hours a day, if in fact, did you have the wind study there?
Yeah, Dan, this is from the Rand Foundation Environmental Management, it cited, the sources, the resources that were cited in crafting, and I want to give Mr. Zelensky and the other members of the ADHOC committee a lot of credit for that, I was, they've actually cited the areas where they brought this information from, so it's a well-defined document.
Thank you.
This time, we're going to go into the proper, the town council meeting, the town clerk.
What is this that I always scare the council, although it's serving in positions of authority and responsibility?
..........................................
President, I'd like to replace that we take, on the item, old business, I'm hitting 13th, oh, sorry.
Ms. Alex, Mrs. Nada, there's Mr. Solley.
Here.
Mr. Zelensky.
Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, I can take out 13th seat, I want to bring this up, this discussion by council, what are the actions on continuing to track the state's medical, U N C distribution system? Mr. Wardy from EMA is here, please. Can you, can you have a quick point, sir?
Sorry.
I'm going to ask, I'm 13th seat, be taking out of order. Do you have a second?
Second.
Yes, question?
Yes, go ahead.
She has second by council, may I?
Mr. President, as this was brought before us by Ms. Grayton Hamilton for the Rand Foundation, how would we expect if Ms. Grayton Hamilton showed up to say, "No, to discuss this"?
Well, she's not here, so I guess not.
If I may, I spoke with town administrator Hamilton on this item specifically, she told me that EMA will be representing her.
In case we have this ordinance, everything, that's what Phil Gray's going.
But I also have another thing for you.
Can I ask a question? Did Mr. Wardy, do you know that you were going to call this evening to speak about this?
No, I did not. I asked Peter Rayconi, he has a family illness, I think, so he's not here today. But I talked to him, and I said, "What is it that could possibly come up?", and he said, "We've done this for 12, 14 years, and all it's going to require is a signature", he didn't think there was any issue.
As long as you're comfortable, okay, this is my two-three, under the microscope. Basically, the standard contract has been submitted previously?
It certainly, according to Peter Rayconi, yes, sir. There's a motion to second.
Okay, the motion to bring it up, Mr. President?
He did.
You did, I said, and then you discussed it.
Any further discussion? Oh, we were still in discussion.
Yeah.
There is a motion, a second for discussion, a motion to approve this contract, have our town administrator sign it, so they get their contract to be around the bottom of the place.
Mr. President, I would have no objection to you signing it this evening if we wanted to cross our Ms. Grayton Hamilton, and have her name in your scope.
There's still the votes involved.
Yeah, take them over. We're still in discussion at this point, because we have voted, we've been up.
Michael, we move this up, and we get that.
Very, yes, that's your vote, Paul.
Ms. Alex, Mrs. Nada, Mr. Solley, Mr. Zelensky, Mr. Bush.
Yes.
I'd like to make a pass at this, and this, the world of the council, if we sign this, I'll be more happy.
I would make a motion, Mr. President, that you acting as the president of town council in Ossmouthville, and you sign this in date as of today's date.
Chair, second.
No questions? All right, and that's, I just leave it, that's fine.
I have a motion, a motion to approve this contract, if authorized, the president signs it on behalf of the town.
That's fine.
Any further discussion? We're going to have to vote, 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 please.
Ms. Alex, Mrs. Nada, Mr. Solley, Mr. Zelensky, Mr. Bush.
Yes.
Thanks, Dan.
Mr. President?
Just touch, Mr. Solley?
I'd like to make a motion, move up, I'm going to use this, EMA, especially by council board, action, test on the board, town grounds, with contaminants in list of chemicals pesticides used on the ground.
Second. Any further discussion?
You have to.
I'm sorry.
Hey, how about, you know, how about we take this, and give it to whoever needs it?
You have to have that teacher's voice, right, and say, "All right".
A recess voice.
A recess voice.
So, there was a motion.
I did a motion to move in, say, EMA, discussion by council board, action, on testing report of town grounds with contaminants in list of chemicals pesticides used by town grounds.
And it was seconded by the mayor. The motion by council, Solley, seconded by council, and now the council, Mr. Zelensky. Any further discussion of this? Quick, vote, vote, vote to move on.
Ms. Alex, Mrs. Nada, Mr. Solley, Mr. Zelensky, Mr. Bush.
Yes.
The reason why I have this on the agenda is, I was just notified that an eight-year-old girl has just been diagnosed with a rare bone cancer. This is the second young girl that we've had with the same cancer, it's a rare form. We've also had two other, two other students in our schools with another rare form of cancer, and there was another girl with leukemia. I basically want to make sure, make, bring awareness to testing that we can be doing. Recently, in 2013, Miami was seeing some issues with some testing, whether it was water and soil, and they had all of their parks throughout Miami tested. Basically, what I'm looking for is this council to approve, looking at using green chemicals rather than pesticides on our parks and fields, as well as sample soil testing throughout our town facilities that we control for any possible contaminants. This is not pushing a panic button, I don't believe that there's anything wrong there, but I do believe that we need to be proactive. As someone that's moved to town 11 years ago, I was talking with a school committee member of Lombardi's wife this week, and I said, you know, it wasn't until the second time we lost power that my wife realized why we actually filled the tub up with water. It's kind of the same thing, you have a well, you move here from the city, you take it for granted that water comes out of your faucet. How many times are our residents testing water? You know, if you have a deep well, you should be testing your water at least once a year. If you have a shallow well, you should be testing it quarterly roughly. You should be testing your soil every three to five years. I don't know if we've been doing that as a town, let alone as residents, this is more of an information thing for me. But I would like to be, have the town be the leader and test our soils and look at going to, like I said, green chemicals rather than mass-produced pesticides. I know I'm running the basketball program, this is my fourth, not consecutive year, consecutive season, so we went winter of '14, summer of, well, winter of '14, '15, summer of '15, winter of '15, '16, summer of '16, where we've had new fundraises for a child with cancer in this town. And I just want to be proactive as a member of the town council. So my motion would be to, to look at, look at the chemicals currently used, as well as any pesticides, insecticides. If they're already green, that's great, if not, look to switch into green chemicals for our town grounds, our athletic facilities and parks, as well as do a sample soil testing at all facilities.
Mr. Solley, would you consider adding water testing for our school? I said, can we add the water testing of our schools, the wells and water included in this testing also?
Councilwoman, that'll be part of my motion tomorrow night, I don't disagree with you, if you want to make a part of your motion, but I would think that as a school committee, we would be responsible for that. Not saying that we shouldn't, but I would hope that we would do that, to be honest with you. And I understand, just from the information I have, that we do have the wells tested for the schools, but I don't, I want to be sure, and I agree with the value percent that we do need to test it if they're not.
In your, when you vote before the school committee, can you also request the environment of the school, the air quality of all the different buildings, to make sure that the air quality is fine, there's no other issues that could be, or anything?
Absolutely.
Thank you, councilors. Ms. Lombardi?
Yes.
It's great that we're going to be testing the soils, perks down to the water table, it's into the water, but I'd also like to suggest that town water sources be inspected as well. If we have town water in any of our buildings, that should be inspected, like council Solley says, we're not pushing the panic button here. But we've seen what happened to a major city, well, the Trump, I don't expect that to happen here, but one never knows what's coming through those pipes to our children, so that, you know, whatever, full testing, I can certainly support that. And as far as whether it's the school committee, school department, or the town council that supports us, I think both committees are going to come together on this, on our kids.
Thank you. The only question I had was soccer fields next to the elementary school, I don't have jurisdiction on those, but, I mean, I'll be pushing for testing that? I believe that the town has the soccer fields at NSCS, so that would be included. I'm looking for, and I may miss one, so please don't kill, Pacheco Park, the soccer fields, medals, yeah, all playgrounds and facilities, correct.
A complete environmental study of all town practices, and water and environment. Ms. O'Hara, what did you say, something? I'm sorry, you're dead.
You know, you don't have to worry about what's going on now. This town had a lot of small dumps. Houses have been built on those dumps. It's a big house looking at me, I, well, my husband, we're first married, we're talking 50 years ago. These dumps, everything is covered over, there are homes on there. We have, we have a major aquifer, there was a major dump over that aquifer. So how would you own steam with that? You know, it's preventive medicine, go check up, people can actually start doing that with their homes, because you don't know what's here. I can remember ponds that you could swim in, they were spring fed, now, they're not doing. Why? Because their houses were built with septic system, where the, uh, first, leak check, but they, and it's covered over. Now, they've kind of blown over, houses are even closer, and what do you think somebody needs? I'm excited about what's happening. What does that tell you? So, um, yes, I, I say check, and, and when you check the old school, make sure they don't put down a coat of, uh, floor polish or do something else before they come in here, because we still have the tests. And, uh, when you're coming in and out, you know, it kind of gets things riled up, but when they come in, the air quality, the water is not, it's not right now. So, again, and some of these tests, trials, when things go up, make sure that when they go into the school, that they're not playing games with you. This is a big one, I saw, well done.
Hi, I'm Anne Powers, and, uh, please call me. I am Anne Powers, and my daughter is the eight-year-old girl Julia that's been diagnosed with cancer, um, within the last couple of weeks. I was gonna invite her tonight, but she said she's sick of talking about cancer. So, I appreciate this being raised here in North Smithfield, in our little town, and if anything we can do to stop it from happening to anyone else, because I wouldn't wish this on anybody. And one thing that I would like to know is regarding the actual studies that will be done, will the results be made public, and how will we get the results, will they be on the website, will they be in the LA grade, will they be, I will, we know.
All of the above.
Thank you very much for putting this on the agenda, I really appreciate it.
Thank you for your courage.
Quick comment, Jason Barra from One Soccer Hill Road. I love the fact that this has come up, and I love whatever it's tending to do with the schools, uh, in light of the super fund sites in town. Thinking that it may be a good idea to contact, uh, and find out if there are ground monitoring wells within a radius around those super fund sites, to find out if there has been any leaching going on. Got to kind of not miss the big picture as well as the underlying issues. So, given the history of the town, and given the history of what's in town, I don't know who the proper authority would be to contact those individuals, but, um, I think my living occupational health and safety, front sites, uh, and how they're regulated with the EPA, there should be some monitoring that we can take a look at to see that. Again, it's just checking to make sure, be proactive. But thank you.
Okay, so to wrap it up, uh, my motion's gonna be, uh, excuse me, to test all, to vote for testing on all town facilities, uh, soil, water and air quality, um, for any contain, possible contaminants, as well as getting a list of current chemicals and pesticides being used on our town grounds and facilities. This may need to go out for an RFP, uh, based on price, um, and that money, I would say, would come from contingency.
I'll, I'll second that. Say the motion, Counsel? Counsel, you wanted to be the second, did you?
I would like to amend it that we include in the motion that all results are made public, published in the newspapers, on the website.
So, uh, so can you also add to publish and make public all results of all testing?
Oh, he's also wants to be published on a website, is that correct?
Yeah. motion by Counselor Sol, seconded by Counselor Al, Counselor Zelinski, Counselor woman NATO, and the chair. That all information will be posted, made public, what's the results will come through, and we'll be moving out to RFP.
So, Mr. President, if I may, Counselor Sol, uh, tonight I think we should decide who's going to shepherd this, uh, who goes through the town administrator's office, or... Jason, you seem to be filling in for the town administrator, sorry, I'm making an assumption here. Can you carry this information back to the town administrator and say that this, this has been added? Thank you.
Thank you.
Vote, 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 please.
Ms. Al, yes, Mrs. NATO, Mr. Sol, Mr. Valenski, Mr. Bush.
Yes.
Should we, uh, Mr. Valenski, stay on the same item for a moment? Should we set a date certain to have some sort of update, so we can make sure that we stay on top of it?
That's a good point, Counsel.
Let's go, thank you, is out, signed, stand.
Like, yeah, why that long?
It'll be thirty days.
It'll be thirty days, we can, we can get our date. First, go off for an RFP, set up, set up the scope, set up the RFP, that should be done within two weeks.
So it's gonna be thirty days, is it not?
Yes. I'm gonna make that motion, so it's... I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Counsel. Just make a motion that, uh, that this process begin immediately, uh, and that with every thirty days, there is an update of where we are, that's going to require a request for, first of all, it's got to stop the scope for work, and a request for proposals, advertising, this has to move along, it's not something they can write. So that's my motion.
Okay, we have a motion from Counselor Zelinski, seconded by Counselor Sol, second. Counselor NATO, Counselor Al, the chair. So we have, have the updates provided every thirty, thirty days, and it's not a clock, it's starting tomorrow.
One more motion, Mr. President?
Well, we'll call that.
Okay. Vote, 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 please.
Ms. Al, yes, Mrs. NATO, Mr. Sol, Mr. Valenski, Mr. Bush.
Yes.
One more motion, Mr. President?
Motion, NATO.
I move that this item stay on our agenda, at least for this second workshop meeting of the month, if not every meeting. So if we do have updates, we can at least discuss and move.
So, quick point.
Second, my motion, Sol, Counselor Zelinski, Counselor Al, the chair. To have this, uh, to have this placed on each, each docket. So in other words, uh, every two weeks, if a replacement, if there's anything new, we can provide the public with the information. So, any further discussion? Gary Madam, vote, 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 please.
Ms. Al, yes, Mrs. NATO, Mr. Sol, Mr. Valenski, Mr. Bush.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Powers, your daughter is trying to collect books for Hadro Children's Hospital?
She is.
And her goal is, what, 500 books?
500 books.
Okay, so if, if anyone does have any children's books, I am collecting them up at the basketball court this week, from Monday through Thursday, uh, six to nine PM, if you have any children's books, want to, uh, drop off to help, uh, Ms. Powers' daughter reach her goal. Thank you. Yeah, the porch regular.
The porch regular, absolutely.
Can we just swing by your house, Counsel?
If you want. Cut my grass, like, it's been a while now.
I think that's it.
Okay, we're going, uh, now we're going to resume the docket, item four, zoning ordinance amendment, section 5.4, uh, service industries, public area, discussion by council, women action on secondary.
Mr. President, uh, the ADHOC committee is here, I believe they have a forum, so, uh, Chairman Lenz, do you want to call your meeting director, just so that you can cover, make sure that the meeting was called, or...
Um, yeah, I, I just think I'll speak, speak to you guys.
Yep. So, I'd like to call it out.
We have, uh, we have, uh, this is, this is, uh, religious stories, I'm just going to go on, myself, and, uh, there's...
So, Mr. President, if I may, uh, the ADHOC committee is, uh, prepared to give a brief dissertation about all of these ordinance that they've been working on for, some of them for far too long, uh, and one that's, uh, kind of point of, uh, urgency, so if I can make turn over to Mr. Lenz, are you the designated speaker, Mr. Lenz?
I think so, the others can joke, I guess, I see you. So, the first, the first one up is, um, as you said, 549 Service Industries, that's the, uh, the zoning use table.
Speaking of I...
My gosh, that worked?
Yeah.
Okay. And lead forward?
They'll lead forward. I look, I'm holding it out.
Briefly, uh, I'll...
I don't see why it's a whole point.
Uh, briefly, the, the change is, uh, the use table is taking a group of, of, uh, what we call it, it's called renewable energy generations, and, and cutting out the solar into one use table row, uh, the previous row would have allowed, uh, for any zoning area with a special use permit, the new change disallows it, except for, uh, allowing it in two zones, which would be light commercial and manufacturing, still with a special use permit. Briefly, that change.
So, Counselors, this is before, is for a second reading tonight, uh, basically, your comments, so it's gonna be public hearing, first of all, the public has intended to add, or we should discuss, now would be the time to do it. Mr. Zosky.
Thank you, Gary Zosky, 88th Month Main Street. I, I've already spoken to this issue at the, uh, prior hearing, and, uh, my, I'll just summarize and say that, uh, I believe this is the wrong way to go, uh, with this, this opportunity for the town. I don't want to bore you by saying it all again, uh, that, I, I think the, the suggestion that was before you at the, the prior hearing to, uh, restrict, uh, change the direction of this by allowing the special use circumstance to continue across the board for lots of particular size, of minimum size, with a maximum coverage. I think what was offered by the planner, uh, when we first, what we last talked about this, was a minimum lot size of 15 acres with, uh, maximum coverage of, uh, 30%. What, what that does is gives the opportunity to shield the, any kind of installation, regardless of its size, uh, from, uh, view to, to neighbors, and, uh, to allow, uh, larger landowners to be able to generate opportunity to be able to hold their land, uh, away from development, and, uh, privy to our energy needs at the same time. So, again, I'll just say that I think this is the, the wrong way for the community, and offer that if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Mr. Chairman, uh, uh, D. Hill, Chairman of Planning Board here, I think, wishes to speak.
The planning board was asked, um, to evaluate this for consistency with the comp plan. Initially, it came to us with only a special use permit for, in the LC and the manufacturing zones, and, uh, the, the planning board said that, as it stood, it was inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. Economic reasons, as well as, uh, retention of farming areas and open space areas, large tracts of land, as Mr. Lopsky said. So the planning board was then asked, I believe by this council, to, um, come up with its recommendations as to what to do to make it consistent with the comp. And we had a very long, uh, discussion about it, and, uh, across many of the zones, we wanted, uh, recommended that it stay a special use permit. Uh, again, four reasons, as Mr. Zosky has already put forth. That people with large tracts of land, that if, again, in, in the environment that we're in as far as towns, uh, sometimes people cannot afford to keep those tracts of lands because basically taxes are, are making it unaffordable. This gives them an option to be able to say, okay, I can do something that is relatively low impact, short of having to sell to a developer and have 50 houses put in, which would cost the town an immense amount of money, when, for the kids, and how many kids would be going to school. This provides another opportunity for those types of landowners, and that, having grown up in Situate, uh, and having seeded in Situate as I grew up, uh, old families that own large tracts of land, in the 60s and 70s, it was fine, because taxes weren't going up that high, they could afford it. And once we got into the 80s, 90s, and so forth, and new schools and everything else, all the pressures, the economic pressures that are on them, they couldn't afford it anymore, they sold it all. What that did to the town of Situate was that the developers came in, they built high-end homes, they're great for, uh, home, you know, property values, but, at least from my point of view, it made it so that a kid that grew up in Situate couldn't afford to live in Situate anymore. So, that's my experience, my personal experience, and, uh, I think it's important, because if they grow up in this town, if they want to stay in this town and live in this town as they, they, uh, grow older, you know, as adults, it'd be nice if they could afford it. So, this is an example where I think it is important to give large tract landowners some other opportunity to, to retain that land, and not have to, again, have no choice with to sell it. We offered, again, and I'm, I'm, I think it was submitted to the council, and I think it was considered, again, what our recommendation was, and I would really ask that you reconsider the work that we put in, and what our recommendation was, uh, because I think it's important. The other issue, and I don't know whether Mr. Zosky brought it up... The other issue, and I don't know whether Mr. Zoski brought it up, is just because it's a special use in all of these zones, doesn't mean that a solar system, you know, solar development could be put in anywhere, because it needs certain things. It needs access to the right electrical wires and so forth. So if you analyze that, there is still really not a lot of different areas in the town to which solar could actually be put in, because they don't have that access. So it was, just because we have it as a special use, doesn't mean that it can go anywhere in that type of zone. It has a lot of requirements to make it work and make it fit for solar developments going. So that's something else to consider, and not be afraid of, I guess, that in these zones, our recommendation was to use it as a special use permit. It doesn't mean that every single piece of property would be older, you know, would do that. It has to meet certain requirements, obviously, to make it financially work, you know, to make it doable from a development point of view. That's another consideration. I would just ask the council to reconsider.
One question, so currently, if this goes past, this would not, this would basically not conform with the town, the town plan?
With the comprehensive plan. That was the vote of the planning board. And it was really on two issues. One is using our manufacturing zones and business zones for solar. The question was brought up, and a good question, I think, is whether that is really the best use for our very limited manufacturing zones, to be able to put solar in there rather than some type of business or manufacturing or whatever, or else it would be, would be a bad use.
There are, the industrial properties, we have, on its roofs.
On its roofs.
The industrial is on the province, it was, what's the province, Pecari, Stephen?
I believe this is relative to ground mounted and actual commercial manufacturing of National marker has it on their roof, they're doing it for their own use, and would not fall under this.
Well, three real quick examples of ground mounted, Mr. Chairman, the industrial Bridge River, Brickell property.
Right.
The second one is on the L R N L, which is probably the best use of that land, nothing can be done with, so it's solar panel. And the third one is on what we refer to, most people refer to, it's Picard Farm, but it's owned by Spennell and Spennell. So those are the three. Dean, I don't know if you got this, but it's a memo that was sent by Bob Erickson August tenth, saying he wouldn't be here, but he said, "Planning board found the solar farm ordinance consistent with comp plan, section four dash zero, plan use." Dean Taylor, Scott Lance, Lucian Bruin, Gary Colari were attending. So he's saying he found it consistent.
Not the use table we found inconsistent.
Okay.
The use table ordinance for the solar, we found consistent.
Want to clear that up?
Yes.
All right.
But we did have, we did have some comments and corrections for that, that I hope was for.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Is that correct?
Yes.
First, to make clear, as I've said in my prior comments about this, I have personal interest in this kind of development, so I need to make that clear. That said, however, in my prior comments, I also pointed out to you that other communities, Coventry and Gloucester, have solar installations of the ground-mounted style, and there's only going to be acceptable across the board. Smithfield uses a perspective that allows it by special use across the board. I would not advocate for a simple approval across the board or acceptance, but a special use circumstance like Smithfield, I believe, is the sensible way to manage this. Also point to you that, you know, I think some of you have attended some of the comments about the meetings, where folks who have spoken about their concerns for wind generators, let them speak for themselves, but it's my expectation that if you asked most of them, if they were looking at a solar installation instead of a wind generator on the property on Old Smithfield Road, they might have a different approach or a different attitude about the whole opportunity. Thank you.
Gary, in all fairness, I've attended those meetings, and some of the counterpoints would be that the farmer would be tying up their land for twenty with extension up to thirty-five years for solar, which would be pretty much condemning the use of their lifetime, once the contractual application, so that was also mentioned. So you'd mentioned earlier, Gary, that there should be a minimum of land acres, was that fifteen acres?
That's what the planning board recommended. It was, I think, they said fifteen acre minimum with thirty percent coverage maximum. And I would add to that, that a buffer, a perimeter buffer would be important. I mean, to say, to put the thirty percent right on the property line would be the wrong way to do it. But that's why you do it by special use permit and not by simple approval, so that the process allows for evaluation, consideration of those kinds of circumstances, where is there adequate buffer? As I pointed out in one meeting, the circumstance up in Uxbridge, next to the town highway line, is not a circumstance that I would advocate for. That is not what we want to see in Old Smithfield. There is no buffer. It's, you know, panels at the property line. We don't need that kind of circumstance.
Robert and Jerry, ad hoc committee, as you deliberating, and just keep in mind, I guess, for whatever it's worth, from all the meetings that we went through to develop what we presented, is when you look at the use tables, you also need to look at the proposed ordinance, because if you go on the recommendation of the planning board and you go with SP, likely going to have to rewrite the ordinance, because I don't believe we addressed anything to do with land clearing. If you have a large lot, but it's not large enough to generate, do we want trees cut down, even on farmland? And we didn't specifically identify a setback from boundary lines, which really is the crux of the matter. If you start to allow these in residential districts and you don't have a formalized setback, the special permit does not give the zoning board that kind of liberty. We can set criteria, but we can't just arbitrarily, I'm on the ZBR, we can't just arbitrarily say, in this case, we want five hundred feet, and in that case, we want two hundred feet. We have some leeway, but if there's nothing in the ordinance that says you must have at least a minimum, so my only thought to you is that, whatever your wish is, this will rewrite the ordinance accordingly, but you should be aware that if you do approve changes to the table, you should probably kick the ordinance back to us to make sure that it's written to abide by that, and allow for lot, minimum lot size, setback, and/or if you desire trees to be cut down, or if you don't desire trees to be cut down, to increase the size of that solar farm. Something to consider. May I pose a question to the zoning order review? Ladies and gentlemen, so with the special use that was proposed by the ad hoc committee under LC and, under, let me show the eyes on, LC and M. Zoning ordinance says it was reviewed and composed, does it cover that for special use with setbacks or any of that nature?
The new, the new.
Yeah, for, for solar.
Yeah, the new, the new ordinance for solar, which is an excellent item on the agenda, it does not address those, because we didn't need to, because we were restricting the solar, the ground-mounted solar only to those two zones, and because they were in manufacturing zones, we didn't feel we needed to do any additional restrictions like that. As Robert just said, if you're going to do it in residential areas, I would recommend that we redo the ordinance to protect the other residences in the area.
I would agree, because if the vote has been about like thirty percent of coverage, if you get into RRC, RU, you know, you start getting the world, you start getting into these different zones, thirty percent could be way too much.
Right. I'd also recommend that if you have an address, what is it you're trying to accomplish? If you're trying to accomplish to save farmland, then you want to be specific about, okay, this is for, yeah, this is for land that is in, currently under, under, under the farmland, I forgot, I forget what it's called, it's under the farmland, farmland active allowance, it's far forest and open space.
Yes.
Otherwise, what you're doing is you're saying anybody with a large piece of property cannot install a commercial enterprise in a residential area. If that's okay, that's what you want to do, that's fine, but tell us, if you want to save farms, you want to open up for commercial residential areas, how do you want to address the zoning and then the ordinance goes along with it? If you're trying to save farms, there's other things to do. You could allow other businesses on farms besides just solar. Solar's not magic. Matter of fact, we voted your letter about a month ago, if you want to save farms, a very good opportunity is storage facilities. It takes up about one quarter to one-fifty of our space for the same amount of generation. Doesn't require the tie-ins to electrical systems, so it could do, it could do other things besides solar. And that's just one example, there may be other opportunities. So, again, what is the intent? Tell us what the intent is, we can formulate an ordinance and a zoning table that matches that intent. We thought that what we were doing was trying to accommodate the commercial establishments, which is what was going in, restricted to where it would be appropriate, and that was our, that was our goal, your goal and target, so that's where it's going, we're going to go a different direction than we need to, we need to know what that direction is.
Another thing to take into consideration, if the, I'm on a file, I would take the opinion, the zoning ordinance review committee is here, they've opened up their meeting, they can discuss this and give us an opinion, a majority of plurality opinion, we could, I could vote on whatever, myself, I'd be comfortable with whatever, because I've sat with you as you worked your way through this and contributed, as much as you folks have, but I've been there. The other issue here is when you start manufacturing power, it's manufacturing in a residential zone. So there's a lot of little intricacies that may have to be, and I understand the intent is to put it into commercial manufacturing, well, you would not have had to deal with those issues, but if it's being proposed for a special use, there's setbacks, there's noise, there's the amount of coverage on the residential area, and as well as man, now you're actually allowing manufacturing in a residential zone. So, there's a lot. So if the folks of the ad hoc committee wishes to discuss this, I would certainly detain before I made a motion on anything. Or we can continue.
Again, again, we, the ad hoc committee is trying to accommodate the direction of the town.
Yeah.
And naturally, what we need to hear is what, what is the direction of the town? We thought, we thought we understood what we, what we were heading for, and it looks like we didn't, we didn't hit that target.
From public input.
Yeah.
And now the, this council would say, maybe I have a point. And I sat in on these meetings to help with this, so I would defer my personal vote or motion to defer to the ad hoc review committee, because you folks right now are the resident experts on this zoning amendment, zoning ordinance. So if you, if you want to discuss it and give me feedback, I can make a motion, but I have the utmost faith in the ordinance review committee, whatever they, whatever you decide, be the motion that I make.
See.
Not put you on.
It does. I mean, it's, I can do that very quickly.
I know. In light of what you're saying, Captain Zoski, something dawned on me, maybe the solicitor can assist. I don't want to get too technical, but if we're creating an ordinance, say, anyone owns twenty acres, it's not farmland, maybe it's already been cleared, so they didn't break an ordinance if we said you can't clear more than an acre. If it's purely a residential application, and I contract with a solar entity, I clear, I have twenty acre, I have five acres, whatever I have, and I go into business, I'm conducting a business on a residential address, so does the SP cover that? So each time you'd be granting a special permit to operate a business in a residential zone, I'm just, because if we're going to go back and do more hard work, we want to be on the right track. And in the interest of, yes, solar, alternate energy is fantastic, but we lived through one event where the ordinance didn't meet the threshold, and we went through great pains on the zoning board dealing with that. So if we're going to draft something, you should make sure it passes muster on every aspect, even the ones that aren't immediately apparent to us, and that would be one of them that comes to mind. Yeah, and the business would be manufacturing in a residential. However, it's defined, yeah. That's the real. And do you want that in this town where, for whatever reason, whether it's alternate energy or not, that you're allowing residential homeowners to start businesses? It's another question, again. Yeah, Mr. President, I'm getting the feeling here that maybe we ask the zoning ordinance review committee to take a look at this a little more in depth. So I'll make that motion, that we just asked you and said, and I have to compliment them, they've met every week since July, June, working on ordinance as they came before them. Originally, they were charged a meeting once a month, and they've gone over extended meeting hours, and they've been working very diligently on this. I'm very impressed with the skill sets of these folks, so I'd like to make a motion that we continue the section five points, well, let's move on. I'd like to make a motion that we refer back to the zoning ordinance review committee's section five point four nine service industries, as well as section five point seven ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations.
Second, for the special?
Mr. President, I continue the public hearing to a date cert to avoid re-advising. They vote, right now, we're only at item number four, act of our country, so I get just too much technical fatigue to avoid costs. Continue the public hearing to a date cert and defer to a further evaluation.
I would move that we move it out to October, because the ordinance review committee hasn't had a Thursday night off, they've held special meetings on Wednesdays and Tuesdays, they've had two meetings a week. I certainly don't want to put them under the gun and say, we, we're going to set a deadline, so if I move that out to the second meeting in October, and if it comes in, what happens if it comes in sooner than that?
That's why there can be no trickery in the public hearing, so you can always continue the public hearing if they're not done.
Okay.
You can't do the other way around.
All right, so I would make a motion to continue the public hearing till the first meeting in October. Got to give them time to work, huh?
That would be October third?
Wait a minute, I'm not sure yet.
Just to protect us, to save us a couple inches out, when you make your motion, could you possibly include some points of direction to us that you're all in agreement with, that we can focus on, as opposed to us coming back, again, rehashing and possibly getting a kickback or third one?
I agree, good point. So what I want to include in that would be, would manufacturing, manufacturing of electrical energy in a residential area be concerned under the zoning ordinance? Size of lots, like a kilowatt, size of generation, percentage of coverage of the ground, the land owned by the applicant or the landowner, there's, there's a lot, Robert, there's a lot to put in there, so I think if I just, if I were to say, let me make the motion pop blank to the ordinance review committee. The ordinance review committee has always looked at best principles and practices when they review these things, so I think that would cover it.
I would like to feel, frankly, I think the motion is to continue for A and B.
Yes, A and B, so the October first meeting.
Date, which was set for October.
Third.
The public hearing is continued to a date cert.
October third.
And B, which is continuing evaluation, discussion, vote, or other discussion, I think, of all votes, that date cert. Do we continue with that?
Yes. That's my motion.
Second.
That's right there. It's on a busy one day to begin.
Well, I, I know the motion essentially is for, one, to continue with four.
Well, I know the motion essentially is for, one, to continue with four, A, public hearing with date certain, October third. In addition, we got item B, that might also continue to October third. The additional gist of the council's motion was to refer back to the ad hoc committee for consideration of adjusting the use tape to include considerations for setbacks, play cutting. I love that.
Setback, noise, percentage of ground coverage, buffer zone.
Point to be the greater, I missed the delivery, I missed the minutes.
The points are pretty much covered in the winter by foul rocks. I mean, the work that was done on that was masterful, so that would make more sense, just take a look at that.
As part of that, could we get clarification on whether or not that's a potential pitfall or nightmare? The idea that...
Well, this is obviously a unique, I think Mr. Jerry's point is regarding allowing a business use in a residential zone, and you may want them to not do that. If they want to, clearly, it's not a pitfall, it'd be an unusual authorization by a council, you know, as opposed to a business in a rural farming district, a farm-owned business.
Which brings us full circle, back to section 5.49 service industries, in which the ad hoc committee had recommended special use, no, no, across the board, special use allowed and limited commercial manufacturing. That was the intent, to avoid that pitfall. So now we're opening up that camera. I would say right now, I certainly don't want manufacturing in a residential zone.
And I would say that the ad hoc committee, I wish to look at each zone, you're back, instead of just looking at it across the board. If you think about each zone, what is it, are there limitations outside of those zones? Then, it seems to me that for hearing, the large chunks of land that are essentially farmland, or more than can use for farmland, are the land that offers opportunities to exist on themselves. I think that's what I'm hearing, I think that's for sure. I'm sure that residential is a significant question. So they can get some things.
Yeah. So that was a motion? Hope they had it then.
The only point I would make, Mr. Chairman, I feel that the ad hoc committee has submitted a letter to the council regarding their analysis of how they felt as to whether this data did not comply with the comprehensive plan.
Yes.
And I just think that should be made a part of the record.
Well, that's why I brought up the email from Mr. Erickson saying that he found it consistent on the comprehensive plan, section 4.0. That's where I want to make sure that we don't have...
I want to clarify that, I think the plan for the ordinance should be made part of the record. The chairman had some, there were two cents of votes, I believe, they clarified at the last meeting. And the ad hoc committee had a letter, which the council eventually amended to a vote to the ad hoc committee. And I just think that it should be part of the record, it's a public hearing, so it should be part of that. Because the council is gonna ultimately have to do two things. Find consistency with the comprehensive plan, and then pass it on, if you want to pass it along. So you know that is fair.
So under your advice, Sorsor, we're gonna continue this 5.49 service industries, which is under four. And under five, zoning ordinance amended 5.7 to October 3rd. That will include the public hearing, also give the ordinance review committee time to make a final determination for the town council.
I didn't know you had already added in five, so that's, it's gonna be the same motion?
Yes.
I think the motion I talked about before, they want the same motion on five.
Yes, I did mention both.
You did?
I believe I did. I'll make it again, just to make sure.
You did.
I did, okay.
So there's a motion?
With all the requests of the ordinance review committee, the motion also includes a continuing of the public hearing to October 3rd for both. Zoning ordinance amended section 5.49 service industries, the public hearing. Also zoning ordinance amended section 5.7 ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installation. Public hearing continuing to October 3rd as well. And that's it. Waiting to hear back from the ordinance review committee. The motion I'm also suggesting, second by the chair.
Second for the discussion.
Second by the chairman of the area of discussion.
For something, if we put special use on the table, this is a really a question for legal. If we put special use on the table in every zoning location, what that really means is it has to meet certain criteria. It is not an opinion of the zoning board to make an opinion if it's allowed or not. It has to meet certain criteria, yes?
Yes, with a caveat, that it's not the recommendation of the planning board. The planning board is adding a footnote to that special use.
Right, what I'm battling with, with the change, is a balance between what Mr. Zaski said, where I don't like people telling me how to use my land, and Smithfield allows it with a special use permit, but it does open the fact where, that Mr. Ngerian brought up, well, what about the land that's there, and the landscape that's there? And how would we allow that to change? So then there would be all of these tests. I don't know if I'm ever gonna be totally happy with this.
A special use permit in a residential zone was not adopted with a solar farm in mind.
Right.
This is the first opportunity that people in the town are taking a look at this. Is that an appropriate vehicle for the adoption, plantation of solar farm in a residential zone? It's a business.
Manufacturing business. Right, which also leads to...
I'm not saying you shouldn't want it, you don't want it, you don't make that decision, it's up to the council, we're gonna help with it, the ad hoc committee, but it's not something that's the same as a typical special use permit to allow a little relief, if you don't allow access to the house or new apartment. That's not the same analysis.
Right.
One of the problems is the current comprehensive plan, which hopefully will be updated before November, there is a required element for renewable energy. Now, I think it told that the town planner is working on that, drafting that out. But if we wait for that, see, we're in a moratorium, so we haven't come to some type of conclusion yet. If the comprehensive plan gets written, approved by the planning board for the then sitting council's opinion to determine, then it goes to state for certification. If at that point, that there is a new reason to rewrite the zoning ordinance, at that time, the zoning ordinance will be rewritten to reflect the then current updated comp plan. We don't have a comp plan in the field, because we do have a moratorium, the clock is ticking. So I'm of mindset to get this forward. Now, remember that the, I know you know this, I've put it to some of the folks in the ordinance. The ordinance review committee is comprised of a planning board member, a zoning board member, a conservation commission member, public and lodge, town council as well. And also, we have a very great legal representative on that board as well, that used to be the town assistant solicitor. So this is probably one of the finest groups I've ever had the opportunity to work with. I trust them implicitly, come up with the writing. And then if by chance, if the comprehensive plan gets rewritten for the then new council to come in and say, we like it, send it off to the state for their certification, then at that point, a new zoning ordinance may have to be written. But if this ordinance is written well, and is incorporated into the comprehensive plan, it's, you know, it's the old question, what comes first, chicken or the egg? Either way, we could be ahead of it for the comprehensive plan, which means to be rewritten. I hope that makes sense.
It does, and I'm absolutely more inclined to side with our ad hoc committee than any of my own personal ideas, because they actually know more about this than I do. And they've spent lots of hours and a lot of hard work looking at it. So as with Council Zelinski, I thought my name.
We have a consultant who uses alternate energy.
That we do.
And so the idea was that maybe, maybe we want the rest, him to get involved in this, assist us?
I don't mind Mr., not Mr. Dash, Mr. Dash. I have no, personally, I don't. But I would like for the ordinance review committee to come up with, we can invite Mr. Dash, we'll certainly compensate him for a visit, to give us his input. But I would put my faith in the town residents and people that have the skill sets that live in town to do this. Yeah, I certainly would recommend him showing up for a visit.
Just where he could, you know, maybe assist us with, maybe some other knowledge he's aware because he does projects for us and we'll throw up the reading.
Absolutely.
So I think with discussion, maybe we can be a half committee.
Sure. And see, when we're going to October, we should have time to have a meeting.
Right, it couldn't hurt, but I would have to decide with the residents that are on the board.
I understand, I would just say to give you a special perspective on it.
Okay, so I'll add that to my motion. We'll ask Mr. Dash if he intends to have a special perspective. Okay, so we had a motion, we had a second, we ready to vote for this?
And for the discussion, council? Here we go, and put a vote please.
Sales, Mrs. NATO, Mr. Zelinski, Mr. Buche.
Okay, items five, zoning ordinance submitted six question parking, storage of certain vehicles. If the public hearing, a deep discussion about tax, it would interaction on the second reading.
Yeah, I don't mind, yes. So we just, this aligns for a good point that we want to move forward into the wind ordinance, is that before us?
I want to speak on 6.13, I'll take on.
I would defer to Mr. Sors. Yeah. Yeah, after Mr. Sors speaks on 6.13, maybe we can...
Well, since the wind ordinance is gonna be a lot of discussion, I'm sure. I think this will be short, so we can... All right, 6.13, this is the second reading, I was unable to attend the first meeting. I have a question, simple question. Have any changes been made to 6.13 since it was submitted to you by the ordinance committee?
It was still a question?
My idea is...
No, we didn't.
It still says residence.
All right, I'd like to address 6.13.2, the weight limit, five tons.
Yes.
I understand that someone might have suggested it be larger weight limit, and I would like to address that. Assuming you're considering, if you're not considering it, then I have nothing more to say.
I can say, Mr. Sors, I'm not considering. Currently, the ordinance we have in front of us, which was not amended to put residential, still has residence, and it speaks about putting of over five tons gross combined weight. If you have a question on the combined weight, so, but there has been no motion to move this to eight or higher tonnage.
Okay, that's why I heard someone wanted it to be eight.
It was just... It was discussed, but not... Yeah, it was discussed, it's not on the ordinance.
All right, well, quick again, just for the record, Tom Lincoln has pretty much the same wording, maximum five tons. Tom Smithfield, same wording, maximum five tons. Gross vehicle weight is the weight of the vehicle and cable, I understand that. And I know that there are pickup trucks on the market today that have a combined weight of twelve, thirteen thousand pounds, and I understand that someone wanted the increase to eight tons for that purpose. However, trucks go by class, class one, two, three, four, et cetera. I have a chart here, I have an extra copy if you'd like it. The actual weight of a pickup truck is no more than six thousand pounds. Ford Super Duty 350, the largest pickup truck manufactured today, has a gross vehicle combined weight of fourteen thousand pounds. So you'd say, well, that doesn't allow it in the zone. However, it's got a seventy-six-hundred-pound payload. The vehicle weighs sixty-three-hundred pounds, it's just over three tons. So I don't see where that's a problem. And if it's for personal use, again, I think the discretion of the zoning official would not say, hey, that's a commercial vehicle. I don't see that as a problem, I think five tons is more than adequate. Some dump trucks, small dump trucks will weigh six tons, seven tons. I don't think we want those in residential districts, that's my point. Would you like a copy of this chart? These truck classifications? Yes? As you can see, if you go up to eight tons, you're allowing box trucks, city delivery trucks. And also these trucks, Smithfield and Lincoln. And wordings, word for word, ours, nothing over five tons allowed. And that would be my personal recommendation, and it was the recommendation of the ad hoc ordinance committee. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Why do we have all these boards except for us?
Administrator Hamilton wanted it to be reviewed.
I also came with the truck classifications tonight, because I wanted you to understand that I also didn't think on eight thousand, or eight tons, I think was commented at the last meeting, it come from me. The, that would have taken us into a circumstance, as you can see on the listing, of going to class four vehicles. I think we've tossed numbers around here, and gotten into circumstance that, you know, really need to fix that circumstance with the definition. Gotta go gross vehicle weight, not gross combined weight. Because what we have right now was the comment that I made that is something you don't want to try to enforce, that's just not gonna work. The, but, you know, long and short of it, all of these things, you know, I appreciate Mr. Sors bringing forward that other communities have the same language, I guess. Perhaps it's what we need, I don't know. I just, I was trying to contemplate how we could do something that just allowed common sense to apply to these things. Because these vehicle parking circumstances are one of these things, I think that we've got a solution looking for a problem. And can we be gentle with the ordinance that says that, you know, we are a community that considers neighborly behavior, and asks that people consider their neighbor when they park anything beyond a common passenger vehicle? And let it go to, you know, I don't know, the discretion of the zoning officer to enter into, or to hear complaints, and try to resolve them without stuff that you can't enforce? That, I mean, this is, this is just, I don't know, it's, they can't, well, and what you have now, I don't think you can enforce. And then secondly, you know, in other places, we're not enforcing, we're just not doing it. I mean, driving all the time, look what you see, we're just not enforcing it. And frankly, I don't think we should be enforcing it, because, again, it's not a problem.
Okay, it's not a problem to the vehicles parked next to your kitchen window, that's what the problem is.
Where, where's, has it ever happened, Paul?
I don't think it's been enforced.
Has it, do we have a problem? That's all I'm asking, do we have a problem?
I think we do.
Do we have a problem?
We have a lot of problems.
We have a lot of problems.
Listen, in my neighborhood, you know, still wrote it, a man parked in the truck, a sailboat, to the cop here, right on the parking lot. So when a neighbor looked out, there was a sailboat in that area. We got the sailboat out, took off four months. Now, we have someone living in a trailer. Okay, there's the trailer. Well, then, well, that guy has it done. Then a while later, a man puts his SUV out in the street, runs a line to the house. There's five days, I didn't know what he was charging, but I was getting charged over this. So I called the police, they said he had an off-accident. He said, put that, take the, put underneath him. Over the wire to the house.
It's dangerous.
Okay, come on. And it's a foul. So these things may not happen in New York. And I asked him, I said, you know, the kids are playing, it's dangerous. Well, it was sort of house, I was universe every time, and he called me, not princess, to be honest. But I smiled, I said, he did. Now, so, these things do happen, you think people care? That's why this town might trouble you, because what's happening down there, and doesn't get there, and this whole, it's not my neighborhood, so who else would have looked like a, not a princess?